Oops, and welcome to the, this July 17th council work session. We have one piece of really significant business, and so manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, it's been an interesting journey that we've been on for the last many years with respect to Envision Eugene. What I would say is, I think it's been a really good journey, and not everybody has agreed all the way along the lines, but I think there's been some really productive, constructive conversation. There's been a lot of input throughout the community. The council, of course, has visited this topic on numerous occasions, and so tonight we're coming down to the place of, we're asking you to take some action to really move this forward and land some pretty significant pieces of Envision Eugene. And so, Robin and his team will take us through that conversation, and then we'll open it up for wherever you would like to take it.
Thank you, John, Mayor and Council. I think at this point, I'm just going to turn it over to Terry for a brief presentation, and then we can proceed.
Thank you. We'll have plenty of time for questions. I've gotten my presentation down to seven and a half minutes. See if I can do it, now that I've made a promise. So as the mayor said, today's agenda item is deliberations and potential action on the urban growth boundary, following over seven years of community input, technical analysis, revisions, and public hearings. So the goals of this brief presentation are to provide the council and the public viewing with a brief overview of the UGB proposal, and to summarize the public comments submitted to the council and staff's response to them. And then we can answer any questions you may have to assist with your deliberations and action. The Envision Eugene decisions began in 2012, with the council's approval of the Seven Pillars and the 2012 recommendation. Council directed staff in 2012 to prepare UGB adoption documents in line with the community Decisions were made about efficiency measures between 2013 and 2015, what population forecast to use, where and how much to expand the urban growth boundary, and how to plan for housing. And all of these decisions lead up to tonight's decision, which is about putting the baseline urban growth boundary into place. This decision will enable future city project work in growth monitoring, needed housing code updates, urban reserves planning, and neighborhood planning, among other things. So what's in the package? First, a little bit about the process. As you know, it's been a two-step process for the formal adoption, starting with the county and city planning commissions, who did their work over the winter and spring. And we brought the package to you and the Lane County Board of Commissioners beginning in June. You held a public hearing, and you're now at the final step of deliberations. So in Oregon, every city has an urban growth boundary and a comprehensive plan, and there's a fairly prescriptive process that every city must follow in order to adjust their urban growth boundary. The process requires specific studies to show how much land we need and how much we have, and this binder is mostly full of those studies. They make up much of the documentation for Eugene's proposal. The result of our land sufficiency studies are a demonstrated need to add land for jobs, parks, and schools in the Clear Lake area, and a park in the Santa Clara area, because our locational studies pointed to those two areas as the best places to grow for those The Clear Lake expansion area provides over 3,000 jobs for the Bethel neighborhood, the Golden Gardens Community Park, and a future school site. Future planning will aim to integrate business development with wetland mitigation and green development strategies for the area, such as working with farmers and food producers to locate a new food manufacturing and distribution hub in the area. That's just an example. Once the area is in Eugene's jurisdiction, we can begin working with property owners and partner agencies on the design and funding for future roadways and other utilities to serve the area. We're committed to finding solutions that work. For example, we've heard testimony about safety issues with the Theona and Highway 99 intersection, and we've proposed removing the Theona Drive project and revisiting a solution at a later date with affected property owners and agencies. In Santa Clara, future work will be done with the community to design the improvements to the park and mitigate impacts to the neighborhood. In the Clear Lake area, we're proposing a new overlay zone with two main goals: protecting the large employment sites and addressing environmental justice issues. Next steps in the Clear Lake expansion area include planning for infrastructure and wetland mitigation, as I mentioned, and economic development efforts to help Eugene incentivize green industry, for example by partnering, partnering to plant trees, and I've shown an example here of the Mountain Rose Herbs Project at their facility in West Eugene in the picture on the right. These kinds of efforts will be enabled by adoption of the UGB and help tie implementation of Envision Eugene to the climate recovery ordinance and other city goals. For residential land, the city is able to accommodate our 20-year needs inside the existing urban growth boundary with two strategies chosen by council last year. These include planning for high-density housing downtown and about 600 medium-density homes by slightly increasing the minimum density in our existing R2 zone. For all housing types, we can accommodate most of our needs on existing vacant and partially vacant land, shown in the map on this slide in yellow. Those are our existing vacant and partially vacant residential lands. The adoption package also includes establishing a robust growth monitoring program. This new effort will allow Eugene to respond and adapt to future conditions going forward. The plan is set up to be flexible and adaptable in line with Pillar 7. The first growth monitoring report to council is due three years after UGB acknowledgement. Your public hearing was at the end of June, and among the issues raised by the public were questions about the timing and urgency of the growth monitoring program. We heard a lot about wanting to make sure that we prioritized that program. We received testimony about urban reserves planning and questions about how that process would unfold. There was testimony about housing supply and affordability, a concern across the community with many different stakeholders expressing concern, testimony from the owners of Eugene Sand and Gravel property, and the testimony I mentioned previously around Theona Drive. Staff considered all of these pieces of testimony and prepared responses for you. They're in your pocket. They include an overarching memo with the themes categorized by topic, a specific memo about housing affordability authored by Alyssa Hansen, a memo about all housing issues authored by Heather O'Donnell, and two memos from Emily Jerome responding to the legal arguments about the sand and gravel property and the home builders association's concerns. So if you have questions about any of that material, Emily and other staff are here to answer them. I'd like to also mention that we received many letters of support in the public testimony, including one from Thousand Friends of Oregon and one from the Chamber of Commerce, a rare and perhaps unprecedented occurrence to have both of those parties united in their support of a city's UGB expansion, along with other letters of support from past participants in the process, including the League of Women Voters. Just a reminder that both planning commissions did recommend approval of this package to you, and they discussed the details of this proposal at length and included suggested actions that the city could begin taking in a letter to you. The next steps, if you deliberate and take action tonight, are to pass the proposal on to the Lane County Board of Commissioners, who will consider this package at their August 8 meeting. And that's it? Is that about eight minutes?
Well done. That was great. That was a great summary of the process. I already have one person in the queue. Now I have two. Emily, who else needs a, wants to wave? All right, we'll start with Mike, and then to Emily.
Thank you, Mayor. Probably I need a couple rounds here, I might think. My, my first questions, I think, are going to probably be for Emily. I'm not 100% sure, but let's try that. First, if the Chair of the County Commission and the Mayor are unable to reconcile a difference between the council's decision and deliberation and action and the commission's, what's step next?
So, I think you're referring to the process that was included in your most recent revisions to the metro plan for resolution of conflicts, for the parts of these ordinances that amend the metro plan. And that alludes, that refers to a process where the mayor and the board chair are required to get together and try to come to a resolution and bring them back to you. But the provisions also provide that the governing bodies can come up with a different approach if that's what you desire. So I just want to make sure you, you know that. Those provisions, I believe, also say that if no resolution can be reached within six months, it's considered denied. So basically, until that process is over, I guess we don't consider the proposed amendment to be denied. But, you know, I think that as staff and the city manager would probably be having us work on all sorts of things, ideas about mediation or trying to work through the process to move it forward in a number of ways, and other than that, I can't tell you, there's no prescribed way, other than it sort of starts with the mayor and the board chair.
Awesome. Okay, next question. The language that is used is how you describe a UGB, isn't that correct? It exists in statute, in ordinance, in whatever, it exists in written language form. Is that correct, as opposed to a map?
No, we're actually, what's included in your packet is a map, a digital map that's being, you're being asked to adopt it electronically.
Awesome. Where does that exist? In other words, that definition of where the UGB is, lives in a document somewhere that's, once it's officially acknowledged, where does that live?
The official copy, copy will be kept in the city recorder's office. It's been available online and continue to be available online.
I'm not asking a very, I'm not asking my question very well. So it exists, the current UGB, right?
The current UGB.
The current UGB, could you describe it for me? Where does it, where is it?
I think it's debatable, quite honestly, because the city of Springfield has taken actions to, it established its own UGB for purposes of residential land, and it did not expand. It found that it had sufficient land and basically drew a line down I-5. The question is, did that de facto create sort of the remainder as Eugene's UGB? As a city attorney, I would say no. Another jurisdiction can't do that for us. Therefore, probably our urban growth boundary continues to include Springfield, which doesn't make sense for other reasons. We've consulted with the state at length about this, and frankly, it's just not quite clear.
Because what Terry said at the beginning was that we were going to establish and, and create a baseline. So is this the first iteration legally of the Eugene-only UGB that we will be creating?
Yes, if you don't, if you don't agree with the argument that Springfield sort of created one for us, which is, it's a viable argument, but if you don't agree with that, then yes. It was, it's through the Employment Park and School Ordinance that, in the title, an ordinance establishing the Eugene urban growth boundary, including an expansion for, for employment parks and schools.
The reason I ask the question is because it also uses language in there about adding, modifying language to the existing metro plan. So I'm asking a very specific question. Are you modifying something that already exists, or are we creating a new one? Which one is it?
In the areas that lie west of I-5, we are very clear on where our boundary is. The question is what happens east of I-5. The areas that are being expanded, it's very clear where the current UGB is, and we're making it very clear where it's expanding.
And I appreciate that argument as it pertains to jobs. I'm talking about the whole of this process, and you know that I'm specifically more talking about residential. When I ask the question, are we establishing the initial UGB for Eugene, or are we modifying an existing UGB?
At the risk of, I would say in some ways it's semantics, and it's an unanswerable question. Eventually, a court could answer it. Frankly, with what we're proposing here, we're trying to get in front of it so the question never needs to be answered. The, I would say most, most clearly, we are establishing the first Eugene-only UGB. Eugene has had a UGB for a long time. It's shared, it was Springfield. This is the first Eugene-only UGB, and we were told by statute where we need to draw the line down I-5. And so we, that part is clear, and with this, we are drawing that line down I-5 as, as directed, and making these expansions in the other areas.
And the reason I ask that question is because the language, and I'd like to make a motion, I suppose, when we get there about amending it, because it says we're going to essentially amend the existing UGB, at least that's how I read it. And you're saying we're going to establish a new one. And I want to make it much clearer, and that's one of about three things I want to address with motions. I have 30 seconds left, so, and a couple more things to ask, so. Could you give us more detailed answer about why the Eugene Sand and Gravel property isn't considered for inside the UGB? And the reason I ask is because I get the arguments about why we don't want to bring in farm and forest land that we need to be very conscious of and save, but that's, that property's right in the middle of my ward. I mean, it's right across the street from Home Depot and the gas station and the Taco Time, so it's not like we're, you know, protecting lands, in my opinion, that are what one might typically describe when saying we don't want to sprawl into Oregon's farm and forest land. Can you help me understand that a little better?
It's a very different issue. Proactively, that property owner some time ago sought to be, to have Lane County apply protections to it, and by protections, essentially, there are regulations that apply to that land that prohibit its use for any kind of development for jobs, parks, and schools, other than jobs required to actually mine the land. And those regulations remain part of the property and can't be just simply removed without at least a process that involves dogami, and I'm not even sure what the process is, because it's generally not a city process. Some of you may recall actions regarding Delta Sand and Gravel years ago and how complicated that process was to add a little bit more land to the inventory. Anything around sand and gravel protections is a bit complicated and largely left to rural, rural decision makers. In this case, those protections still apply to the land. If that land was brought in, those protections would still apply to that land, and that land would be unsuitable, or at least unavailable at this time, or until the county took some action to remove those regulations. And we've talked to Eugene Sand and Gravel since my earliest notes showed 2013 conversation, a formal conversation with them recommending that they take the actions necessary. You heard in the testimony, they felt that it was too expensive to apply. So, you know, that's certainly an issue that can be resolved, but at this point, that's the reason why it was not considered to be suitable for this expansion.
Can I ask a quick follow-up? Okay.
Could I get in the queue, Mayor?
Please remember that, because I'm coming back to that.
I got you. Emily.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Terry and Robin, for the nice summary and the years and years and years of work. When I was campaigning, I was absolutely against expanding the urban growth boundary. I was really concerned about the agricultural land. I also said that if I changed my mind, I would say so, and why. And I am changing my mind. I've talked to many people, I've read a lot of stuff, I've asked a lot of questions. We need to do this, the state says so. They're really, this is the best of, of any direction. And it turns out that although there are some good ag lands, there aren't the concentration of really, really good ag lands there. And a lot of the farming has depleted both wetlands and the, the better soils. So I'm interested in the future of the urban reserves, where we're going to expand next for housing and industry, but I'm even more interested in rural reserves, which would be determining which land we would keep as farm and forest in perpetuity. I think this addresses some Bethel needs for a park and a school, and it certainly addresses our need for jobs, which is a repeated plea over and over again. So I think we don't have a lot of choices. I think this has been researched sufficiently, and I'm ready to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire?
Thank you. I appreciate Councilor Semple's remarks and her due diligence. It can be hard to come into a project that's been going on for seven years. So I, I really am hoping that this council can adopt this, this new UGB unanimously. This has been a robust process with many community members and leaders, including some like Councilor Andrea Ortiz and Dave Hauser, who are no longer with us, contributing to this package that we are considering today. And as I joined the council and became educated on this process, I was consistently, and still am consistently impressed with the high quality of the, and the level of work by staff and community members, and I am grateful to all who have helped bring this wise and thoughtful package to us today. This is a decision I think will set us up to meet our needs for parks, open space, and land for industrial needs in a way that provides for the needs both of residents in the Clear Lake area to live in a clean, healthy environment, and the need to have more, much-needed capacity for local industry to access sizable acreage in order to operate and benefit our local economy. So I think this work has been thoroughly vetted, and I encourage my fellow councilors to vote yes on this package and give the work an opportunity to be realized on the ground. We do have the ability to modify our work as we proceed and to take into account how this theoretical work actually plays out in reality, and that should be the next thing that we are focused on. So thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Thanks. Also, I would lend my voice to say thank you for all the hard work you've done over all these years. I've actually been here since it started, so I've kind of followed along, and I remember the sand and gravel and how incredibly complicated that was, as well as being quasi-judicial. And I think with all the consideration that we've had and all the discussion that we've had, I think we've got as good as we can get for right now. And I say for right now because, as I asked before, this adoption does allow for opportunities to make fine tuning and, and for making changes along the way, which I think is a critical element to it, because I think there's still unanswered questions, and there's still things that we want to discover as we go along. And I think the notion around conversation of urban reserves is a critical one, because I think if, if you kind of go with the simplistic approach, give me more flat land so I can build affordable housing for people, and I agree absolutely, we need more affordable housing. That's a very important and very persuasive argument. But if you just say, give me more flat land and I'll build affordable housing, that doesn't really wash, because when you give builders affordable land, flat land, they build expensive homes, unless there's something in there that provides them the incentive to build the affordable housing. And I think we need the time to be able to craft what that looks like, how that needs to work. And I think the urban reserve conversation helps that. I think in ongoing conversations between the city and home builders to try to encourage them to build more affordable housing, when it's not in their financial best interest to do it, but figure out a way to make it in their financial best interest to do it, I think are all things that can be worked on as we move forward. But none of those need to hold up the adoption of the work that we've already done. I think everything that I've talked about, which are critically important issues, can all be done even after this is adopted and we move forward, both with urban reserves, reexamining population figures, and a whole lot of other things. We shouldn't really impede us from approving this right now. So as others have said, I'm prepared to support and approve this tonight, knowing there are additional things we can do, very important things to do, but I think we can do them.
Thank you. Alan?
Yeah, my thanks too, to staff for all the work that you've done. I found it very high-quality and very thorough, and, and you've done everything we've asked you to do over the last seven years. It's been thoroughly investigated and, and, and looked at, and ironically, when Springfield started this process by bifurcating the urban growth boundary, they thought they were going to expand theirs, they didn't, and we assumed we were going to expand ours for housing and other things, but we didn't. And the only thing we're doing is expanding this for a very small piece of property by, between Golden Gardens and the airport for industrial lands, which we, which we do need. And so it's a very modest proposal, I think. It's been thoroughly, thoroughly vetted. I agree with Emily in, in what, her analysis, and thank you for doing that, Emily, and thank you for being open and changing your mind. I had the same concerns, but I'd been entrenched in it for so long, I got there a little sooner. Glad you did too. I, I think the important part about all this is the process doesn't stop here. This is just kind of a midpoint, and then we start going on to, to the next thing. So adopting it now and moving on to the next set of processes and decisions is, is the way this process will move forward. We still have to look at the urban reserves process, we're going to start updating the data and looking at that, and, and the growth monitoring program, coming back again in three years when we've got all that stuff rather nailed down, and, and looking at the urban growth boundary again to see where we are, was, in my mind, always an appropriate way to do it, because you were never going to be able to get it unless you did it real time, like Chris was talking about, which, and then you'd never be able to make a point in time where you, because, in time where you'd make a decision, because it would always be changing. So cutting it, saying this is the decision point, then modifying it later with new information seemed like a very appropriate way to, to move forward. And, and so I'm ready to adopt this package this evening as well, and move forward to those, those, those new and set of processes and decisions that are lay in front of us.
Great. Greg or Betty, either one of you want to comment? Betty and Greg?
I will be the no vote. I would, if it was just the Santa Clara land, I would vote for it. I will not vote for expanding on agricultural land. I don't think we need big plots. I don't think we need the kind of industries that take large pieces of land. And I agree that staff has done a lot of work. That doesn't mean that I'm far from what has been proposed. If we could vote separately on the Santa Clara park land, I would vote for it. Otherwise, I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I echo the sentiments around the table. I think that this is excellent work. You know, this is hard, it's hard to thread a needle like this. My concern goes back to, you know, we're going to make a point, if we go ahead and we pass this tonight, how do we really start, and I know that we've kind of talked about this before, but really kind of narrowing in and zeroing in on the urban reserves conversation in a more solidified fashion? I don't know how to, how to better characterize it than that. I don't have the adjectives around that, but I think creating more certainty in terms of how we move forward and what that looks like, I think is an important part of the conversation as we go forward, because I don't think that the home builders and other folks that are interested in how and what the urban reserves and what the urban reserves will look like as we, you know, potentially go into, you know, undeveloped ag land, you know, to create more, you know, capacity is going to look. So can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. About urban reserves?
In terms of strategically?
Well, what we were directed to do by you back in 2015 was to begin urban reserves research, which we have done. A lot of that work will be updating our expansionary analysis, which we started in 2013. So we have a lot of the baseline information ready that needs to be updated and brought up to the present day. But what you told us that you would like to see is a proposal for urban reserve areas within two years of acknowledgement of the UGB, of the baseline UGB. So we have--
Takes us out to 2019, 2020.
If you, if we achieve acknowledgement this fall, it would be in the fall of 2019, two years, to bring you a proposal. And so between now and then, we have a lot of work to do to scope out the exact tasks that we'll be doing and check-ins with you to make sure the work is headed in the right direction and those kinds of things. But you also allocated funding, so we have money to update the studies and to hire staff to manage the project. Does that get a little bit of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does.
Okay. Mike, second round? Anybody else for a second round? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. My concern with us waiting that long, too, is that we already have an affordable housing crisis, one might argue, in our community. And what we're saying is, we're not going to address that affordability issue when it comes to building enough homes for people for at least two to three to four, maybe, who knows, five years before the opportunity for us to expand in a way that can lower the price of housing is possible. And if you're concerned with affordable housing, and I mean that not in the sense of subsidized housing, but I mean actually affordable housing, knowing that we can't meaningfully address that in the amount of land for housing for several years should be concerning to you, I would think. Emily, to finish off on what I was saying there, we also heard from the representative from that property the request for that land to be included in this. Now, if I were to make an amendment to say, move to add the lands that were specifically referenced in his testimony at the hearing, how would you respond to that motion on the table from our attorney's perspective?
First, I would ask if there's a second.
Yeah, thank you. Not as chair, but as the attorney.
Well, from a legal standpoint, you know, you could direct the city manager to have us look at that possibility, but--
Forgive me, I'm going to interrupt a little bit as we give and take here. We could adopt that in, but you would have a response that we may have difficulty defending that option. Wouldn't that be true?
Well, that's true. I mean, I could tell, what I would tell you is if you just made that amendment and it passed tonight, we would want to bring it back to you, because that's a heck of an amendment to just mean our maps wouldn't--
Sure, 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 sure.
So we'd have to bring it back. If you said, "Don't do any new findings, just add that to the maps and let's, you know, send it to the state and see what happens," I would advise you against it in terms of, you know, defensibility. At this point, we have to demonstrate that where we expand the urban growth boundary is the next best place in terms of the state's hierarchy and their rules. And right now, these provisions don't do that.
Forgive me, but would it be fair to summarize and say, you would say, "You can do that if you want, but it's going to be darn hard to defend it, and I would recommend you don't." Right?
Sure, I would say that.
Right. Okay. So here's my point. I believe that we'll, do you think it's possible we'll see a lawsuit if we don't add that piece of property in?
We've, yes, we've been pretty much told that we're going to be appealed.
And that's what I'm looking for. The only reason that the chamber asked for us to do these two things separately was because of the fact that we didn't want to hold up industrial lands. We know there's going to be a lawsuit to hold them up. We know. She just told us. So there's no reason not to do them together. The reason to do them together is that it affords everybody who has some conflict with our decision the ability to appeal it fairly, as anyone else does. And that's why I will also be a no vote. Because if we insist, and I sense from the votes at the table, I'm not going to fight everybody on this and make a spectacle of myself, but I will tell you that, I'm concerned that we're creating something with insufficient land in order for us to keep housing prices from skyrocketing. I'm concerned that what we're creating isn't legally defensible. I know that what we're creating will have a conflict with the county that I don't know if we can resolve. So I would urge us to hold for a little while longer on this, and if I may, I'd like a third round to say a little more.
Alan?
Yeah, I agree with Mike that we do have an affordable housing crisis, and there's numerous ways to address that issue, other than just expanding the UGB, which the data that we have doesn't support that decision at this time. For instance, I'll be putting out a poll, I mentioned a work session poll on missing middle housing, and I hope the council would support that. The work session is specifically getting at increasing affordable housing options in Eugene by breaking down barriers and creating incentives and seeing what we can do about that. So there's numerous ways to get there, tackle the affordable housing crisis that we have. Last point, the lawsuit that we're talking about is from the Home Builders Association, correct? And it's, and potentially other folks?
Yeah.
Who's the potential lawsuit?
I was referring to the Home Builders Association.
I was talking--
That's who I was. I was referring, Home Builders Association. I thought it was notable that the Chamber of Commerce didn't support that position of combining the two ordinances into one, and because it would potentially delay the implementation of the industrial lands part. So they weren't supportive of doing that. They're supportive of the actions that we're taking tonight.
You are out of order.
Yes, ma'am, I'm not speaking.
All right. Any other comments, clarifications? Chris?
Yeah, this gets back to my earlier point about how do we address the affordability question? And that's what's stumbling a lot of people. Can we get affordable housing sooner rather than later? Do we need to wait a long time? Will urban reserves help us to get there? And from the information that I've seen, if you're depending on single-family detached homes to provide you with that affordable housing, history just simply doesn't support that. In a median family income of about $55,000 in Eugene, that means you have to have a home valued at about $140,000 in order to be able to make that affordable. How many $140,000 homes, single-family detached homes are being built, have been built in the last 10 or 15 years? Not very many. Whether flat land, sloped land, whatever, a home builder can take that same piece of property and they can build a home that makes them a profit of $5,000 or a profit of $50,000. Which one are they going to build? I've been a businessperson. I know which one I would build. So that's why I said earlier, if you want to get affordable housing, you need to provide incentives, you need to work with home builders to figure something out, or you need to build the kind of housing that is affordable. And the bulk of that affordable housing that's been built in the last several years has been trailer parks, unfortunately, manufactured housing, condos, and things like that, not single-family homes. So the notion of how do we get that affordable housing sooner rather than later is we need to build the kind of housing that is within that affordability range, and that's the kind of housing that we have a lot of debate about. Condos, townhouses, those kinds of things, that's what people can afford to live in. The housing market is extremely hot right now. And if you just provide more land in a hot real estate market, you are not going to get affordable housing. You're going to get what the market is demanding, and the market's demanding something more expensive. Missing middle housing is housing that is not only affordable, but is also something that meets the demands of neighborhoods, livability, and a whole host of other things. That's what we need to look at in the short term to provide affordable housing. So for me, I think the combination of housing types, prices, land, it's a whole mix, it's a complicated mix. And just saying, tweaking one dial and providing one little piece of it is going to fix the problem, isn't. And so, yeah, we can debate on this for another 11 years, because there are so many moving parts that this could go on forever. I say, "Let's bring this down, let's land it, and then continue to move the dials," because there's many dials, not just one. And I think we need to move them all, so that everybody can come out of this with something that's going to help.
Thank you. Greg in the queue? Anyone else? Claire, do you want another round?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Go, Greg.
I will, I'll take a slight issue with my friend over here, Councilor Pryor. I can take you over to Avalon Boulevard and show you the $130,000, $133,000 single-family homes that have been built in the last five years. So it is being done, not to a great extent, mind you, but there are some affordable housing that is being built. I think the issue comes back to, you know, how do we create the kind of supply that is necessary for us to accommodate all ranges of housing? Whether it's $133,000 single-family home, whether we've got apartments on River Road or other places, or some of the homes that are being built, other homes that are being built in my ward for $300,000 to $600,000. And the only way that I can see that we do that is by accelerating the timeline, and one of the reasons why I wanted to ask that question in the beginning, of how we get to urban reserves. Because, you know, the demand is pushing us. It's pushing us hard, and we have no subsidies. You know, all of that is, has either disappeared or is quickly just vanishing and evaporating. So we're going to have to have other tools to be able to do that. And one of the tools that happens, or it's not even a tool, it's a market-driven piece where if you have more available houses than the theory is, and what has happened in the past is, a lot of the older stock usually floats down into an affordable range. And so I'm conflicted by the fact that we are, we don't have the ability to create the kind of inventory necessary to expand that market. And that's where I'm having trouble with this. Because if we had the ability to create more buildable, you know, inventory, then we would, you know, I've got 13 seconds left, but you know what I mean. So that's my, that's my really, you know, difficult sticking point here.
Thank you. Manager, you have a comment?
Greg, I really agree with you that the key to all of that is the urban reserves and what you've talked about. The other side is the rural reserves, which is the other piece of that. And the, and the, to be very candid, the sooner we land this, the sooner we get on to what I think is the significant conversation for the long-term, for the community around housing and infrastructures that support that housing and its relationship to transportation and the CRO and all those kinds of things. And so, at least for me, the landing of the UGB is a critical piece to allow us, the council, and others to really move through the urban reserve conversation, which I think ultimately gets to what you talked about, as you mentioned earlier. And so that's the, I think for us, that's what we're trying to get to, is let's land this, move on to the next conversation, which is a critical conversation. The longer it takes to land the UGB, we're just pushing that out by weeks and months and years, and then we never really get there. And I don't, I think that's not the place we want to be.
I just, I just want us to have some certainty about where the finish line is. If that's, you know, if we can, if we, by doing this tonight, we can create certainty at some point, you know, certain in the future that we get to the urban reserves, then, you know, I can, I can--
And the council has directed us very specifically that says, within this time, I think it was two years, after this point, our job is to bring you the opportunity to take action on the urban reserves. And it's a pretty short timeline of a couple of years. You've appropriated the dollars, we purposely have done that because we wanted to make sure that we had the dollars to be able to meet the timeline that the council set up. And so all that is in the queue, wanting to move forward with all that.
And my last question, Mayor, is this. So if we are challenged by a party to remain unnamed out in the community, how far out further could that push us with nailing an urban reserves piece?
Any else has to answer the--
I'll give it a shot. So I think the reality is, we beginning, we've already begun urban reserves, we're going to continue with that work. The limitation is you have to have an adopted UGB in place in order to be able to adopt the urban reserves. You don't have to have that UGB in place to work on it. So we take action here, we proceed through whatever process unfolds following this. Simultaneously, we're going to be making progress on that urban reserves work. There's a number of conversations we'll be having at this table, making sure that how we proceed with that is in line with what council would like us to do. Great deal of analysis, public conversations, looking at alternatives, getting to the point to where council can make a decision on urban reserves within two years of state acknowledgement. So we're not going to waste any time picking it up and running with it.
I could add a couple of things to that. When you directed us to start work on urban reserves, you also asked us to do some other things, and they include working on the growth monitoring program and also updating our needed housing regulations. And that timeline is shorter. It's one year after UGB acknowledgement. We'll be bringing you back suggested changes to our needed housing code standards. And if a poll is successful about missing middle housing and removing barriers to that, that is something we'd be happy to work on in the coming months and years as
Jennifer, do you want to, do you have any comments? Because I've gone around a couple times without calling on you. Are you okay? Okay. All right. Mike, I'll give you one more round.
I couldn't possibly agree more with my friend, Councilor Evans, in his comments. I could go on that point, with that point in greater detail for quite a long while, but that isn't the question for us, and the votes are here for us to proceed, I think, at the table. The only question isn't so much, is it wise to? Because I don't think it is either. But, and then that was my comment, that I'll be a no vote because of, I think, a bad outcome. But our only real question is how we will proceed. Will we proceed in a way that creates harmony and gets this done, or won't we? And Alan, I would say, my comment was around the fact that the jobs, parks, and schools piece was the piece the chamber was saying, "We don't want to see a lawsuit hold that up." And that's what I've just identified, absolutely will bring a lawsuit, and we already know it will. So to not put these together because we don't want that to happen isn't sensical, because we already know it's going to. And so I would, I would like to offer that motion, but I don't think it'll pass. But I have grave concern that what we're doing, if we won't join these two items together, is creating a barrier with our friends at the county that will take even longer, as it has been discussed, for us to resolve. And I'd prefer we didn't. I prefer as well that we get on with the next phase. But I think we really need to consider for a minute that there are different views and different levels of government. And I believe that when we hit August 8th, the county commissioners may view this differently, and that it's important to join these two motions together. So I'll offer that motion at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Yeah, Alan?
Yeah, I don't think joining him will preclude a lawsuit.
Yeah, I don't think joining him will preclude a lawsuit regardless. My question is about what happens next if? And the two scenarios are, what if we pass these out separate motions, and one or the other is we're both are challenged? Where does that go? How long does that take? What does that do to us implementing the urban growth boundary and our ability to then use the employment park and school lands? And the second one is, what happens if the county comes back to us and says, we don't agree with you, and votes no on the, on the, on the two motions?
I think there are probably, there are probably 10 questions in that. So let me do my best to kind of...
I nailed it down to two.
Okay. So let me see if I'm getting you right. So basically, the way the state law works is no matter what actions we take, they are appealable. There's no, there's nothing that couldn't be appealed. The question is which venue at the state would look at it? So state law normally has a land use decision like this going to Luba, but there is an exception if you are establishing or expanding an urban growth boundary by 50 or more acres. The ordinance is before you. The reason the jobs, parks, and schools ordinance is so much bigger is because it establishes the Eugene-only urban growth boundary and expands it for jobs, parks, and schools. And so with it, it has all of the provisions that go with that. That ordinance, because it includes an expansion of 50 or more acres, is unquestionably going to be reviewed if appealed by the Land Conservation and Development Commission because of that special statute. The residential ordinance could also be appealed. It would be appealed to Luba because all that really is included in that ordinance in the city's packet is adoption of an efficiency measure to accommodate those 600 medium-density jobs. Homes. Homes. Yeah. Medium-density homes. And then both the county and the city ordinances adopt a study that say, okay, our study shows we don't need to expand. So there's no expansion included with that one. So presumably, if they're kept separate, that one, if it was appealed, would go to Luba. So combining them or not, it doesn't eliminate the ability for an appeal or review. If we need the county, if the city votes yes on the jobs, parks, and schools ordinance that establishes and expands the UGB, the county must also adopt it.
Before you go there.
Okay.
If they're appealed.
Yes.
Do they get stayed? Or do they get into, or do we start working on it? And then if it gets remanded, we fix it later?
We have prepared these so that they take effect. That, but they don't even get appealed unless jobs, parks, and schools also is adopted by the county. So that one, it can't take effect. You can't expand your urban growth boundary without the county. And that's happening in this jobs, parks, and school ordinance. So if the county says no to that one, we, the mayor, has a lot of work to do. If the county says yes to that one, but no to the residential ordinance, there, it's kind of questioned what happens at that point. Some of the actions in there unquestionably, we can take alone. We can still do the R2 minimum density code change. The county doesn't have to do anything on that. It's not clear whether the county actually has to adopt this study that says we don't need to expand. The county believes so. So we, in good partnership, have them acting on that as well. Whether or not they're absolutely required, I don't know. We might go back to the state and ask them that question, get them involved in this mediation process. It's not quite clear. But essentially, the, it would be status quo on residential. If they didn't adopt, we would be where we are right now, which is with an urban growth boundary that is probably, may include Springfield, may not. And we will have difficulties in taking local legislative actions because we are not sure of that, and we don't have an inventory that we can say applies today.
Taking legislative action on the new area that's being expanded into, or the whole UGB?
No, I mean, future, future action. So if you want to make a code change, and we have to show we can make that change if we still have enough residential land, we don't really have a study in place right now that tells us how much residential land we have. That's what we're asking you to adopt for the next 20 years.
So if, if either of them get appealed, it doesn't stop us in the short term, but it goes through that process, the appeal process?
It goes through the process, which keeps me busy and keeps a lot of your staff busy. Because it involves them as well as me in terms of testifying and providing materials, and...
But we get to move forward.
If you, if, yeah.
I'm allowed.
I mean, we can still work. You can't adopt anything. But we could still work if we have time. The fastest possible route, probably through the LCDC process, I would guess, would be best-case scenario, eight months, more likely about a year. And then that could get appealed to the Court of Appeals, which has been known to just wait a really long time. The best-case scenario through Luba most lately has been about six months. And then that could be appealed to the Court of Appeals. And again, so it could take some time. And if the, if the result is a remand because the state finds that we didn't do something quite right, then there's the work.
Start over.
Well, or to deal with whatever they say.
Yeah. Right, which would add more time. And then that's appealable.
Right.
Yeah, so that could go on forever.
Right. And other jurisdictions have experienced that.
And if the county were to vote no on either of them? If they were to vote no on the residential one, that one, we, what happens? And if they were to vote no on the employment, schools, and park one, what would happen?
Well, we have put the establishment of the UGB with the expansion in the jobs, parks, and schools ordinance. So if they vote no on that, we basically have, we've got no forward movement, really. Bits and pieces of it, we may be able to do on our own, but we won't have established a Eugene-only UGB, and we won't have added the land for the 600 jobs or for the 1,000 jobs. 3,000. 3,000 jobs. Their department, my department. So if they don't, if the county refuses to take action on the jobs, parks, and school ordinance, we have a lot of work to do in terms of any forward motion. If they say yes to the jobs, parks, and schools ordinance and no to the residential ordinance, you will have a Eugene-only UGB that provides the land needed for jobs, parks, and schools. But there will be no, no way to get the county or the state to answer these questions on appeal because a refusal to adopt it means it can't get appealed, and we can't get that clarity from the state.
Right. So none of it's going to happen real quickly? Any appeals or no votes stop stuff kind of dead in its tracks for a long time, and we don't get to move forward on the, on the, on the schools, parks, and employment land? So, and we would be basically back to where we are right now, which is status quo. And for those folks that are voting no or worried about agricultural land, that's fine, I suppose. If you want that 3,000 jobs in our urban growth boundary and the lands to be able to create that kind of employment base, then stalling all this just stalls that potentiality. Okay, thanks.
I just, oh, Greg, go for it.
So I know you guys work together. Do you have a sense, a clear sense of what the county staff recommendation is going to be to the commissioners?
So...
For August, was it August 8?
I, to this point, the county staff have presented it as Eugene's proposal and examined it from a technical point of view, but not expressed a policy recommendation.
Are you talking about whether it's one package or two? Is that the question? Or just, or just an overall recommendation?
The overall recommendation. So the, the jobs, parks, and schools and the residential.
Yeah. The overall recommendation, of course, is from the...
They, I'm sure they've got some kind of, you know...
Yeah, the...
Recommendation that they're going to advance to the, to the commissioners.
They are. They're carrying forward the recommendation to approve from the Lane County Planning Commission. So just like you all, their planning commission makes a recommendation, they carry it forward, just like we're carrying it forward, the recommendation from the City of Eugene Planning Commission. So their planning commission did unanimously recommend approval.
I just want to make one comment about this, which is to echo Claire's comment so many minutes ago, which is that unanimous decision, or close to unanimous decision on this, shows our commitment to this plan, and that speaks to the county. And so I think if we want to ensure a stronger position with respect to the county's deliberations, our standing firm on this is what we believe is right for our community is the best way to go. And my appreciation for this packet and for the work you have done, the responses to the public testimony, you know, it feels very thorough, very complete, very responsive, very well researched. So I think we should have confidence in this work, confidence that this is the step forward, that we take a stronger step if we take it together and make it clear this is what we believe for our community. So that's my pitch. Are we ready for a motion on the table?
Yep.
Does she want to give me a fourth round?
Hmm.
No, that's all right. Go ahead.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5177, ordinance concerning employment, park, and school land.
Second.
Discussion. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move, and I guess I'm going to need a little help with the language. And I wasn't sure I was going to do this. This is why I didn't send out everyone, and I apologize. And intent to move kind of notice to my colleagues because I wanted to see how this discussion went. But I could use some help with, if I wanted this to move through as a single ordinance, would it require coming back to us at a future point?
Yes.
How long of a future point?
At least a couple of weeks.
I, I'll make the argument later if I get a second. I move to join these two ordinances and have them returned to us for consideration.
Second?
I'll second for purpose of discussion.
The reason I will make that motion, and I thank you for your second, is because I've been listening to what the county commissioners' deliberations have been over time and listening to their questions about the separation versus them being together. And I, I know that this gets kind of complicated, but I, hearing my colleague Alan's points and questions, the issue about this was the chamber didn't want it held up with an appeal. The, the jobs and lands part held up with an appeal. And now, after they made that testimony, we already know that either way, there's an appeal coming. So their request to keep them separate is no longer in effect. The reason that they wanted them to be separate is no longer applicable in this case. The reason I think it's wise for us to consider putting them together is because of the, what I would say, the just outcome that it allows for those with some challenges in order to be able to resolve them quickly. But most importantly, because I believe it's what the county is going, it's the condition that the county will have, and it allows all of us to move forward more quickly. I think we're going to be stuck in an unresolved situation. If, if we're not willing to, I think they've, they've indicated very clearly in multiple meetings, the commissioners who've spoken on this, about their desire to see this as a single ordinance rather than separate. So I, I hope I can have the support for us to do that.
Any other comment? All in favor of the, of Mike's motion to combine these two? All in favor? Two? Opposed? One, two, three, four, five. Claire?
I vote no.
Six. It fails. Okay. Now we're back to the main motion. All in favor of the main motion to adopt Council Bill 5177? One, two, three, four, five. Claire?
I vote yes.
Six. Opposed? Two. It passes. Thank you. Okay. Second motion.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5178, an ordinance concerning residential land.
Second.
Discussion. Mike?
Quick question. So Emily, if I might. Did we just establish our UGB with that vote? Is sent, more or less, essentially, legally?
No, the county must act on that ordinance.
Forgive me. If the county were to approve that, then we would have just established our Eugene-only UGB. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so the way this is written is to amend this? Or is it to amend the metro plan as it previously existed with the Springfield Eugene combined UGB? Because it says to, to add language to amend.
Nothing in the residential ordinance says anything about amending the UGB. It doesn't amend it or change it.
I'm going to find that, please. No, 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 that's the motion. What I was talking about was in the AIS. Forgive me for just a second. I apologize. But it said... And it does say in next steps, the Lane County Board will be scheduled to deliberate an act on August 8. Local decisions will then be sent to the state DLCD for the review and acknowledgement. I can't find in the AIS where I read that. I apologize for bringing it up. I'm not seeing it now. But both of these go directly to DLCD?
DLCD has to acknowledge every single land use legislative action, ordinance, or zone change, or anything like that, even when they're appealed to Luba. So the acknowledgement process, when it goes to Luba, is basically after Luba's all done and says it's good, LCDC will acknowledge it, or DLCD will acknowledge it.
I'm trying to establish legislative intent of the body when it comes time for review. Are we amending an existing UGB for residential with this new ordinance we're about to pass? Or are we establishing a new one?
Neither. You're simply adopting a code amendment and a study.
So no UGB exists for residential currently?
You've established the UGB with passage of the first ordinance.
That was my first question. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Alan?
So this motion on residential lands does not increase the UGB or put any lands into the agricultural land. So Betty's concern about expanding onto agricultural lands isn't relevant here, right? This is just, this is just adopting the study.
Right. I can't, I can't say whether it, Counselor Taylor would have a concern about it. But yes, it does not expand under, under agricultural land.
It doesn't expand the UGB, therefore it doesn't do anything with agricultural land. So that's very different. Thank you.
Okay. Ready for a vote on this ordinance, Council Bill 5178? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Claire?
I vote yes.
Seven in favor. Opposed? One. So it passes. Thank you very much. That's great. Thank you. Thank you.